Let me use your meeting as life.
Good morning, welcome to the August fourth meeting of Riley County Commissioners. These hands point to the. What the United States and America and to the vote which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Going with certain flash in the green, the spring weather here again this week, but I think it's coming good yet. You have other comments, Gary?
Rearrange for a little bit just so we can go through this.
Without it sliding everywhere.
Okay. I'm going to turn this on. Kind of sort of. Good morning Commissioners, staff, elected officials. My name is Gary Oles. I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. I guess you could call this my annual visit with regards to the budget. You've spent a lot of time, a lot of brain energy, a lot of resources. What is it crossing your Ts and dotting your Is, trying to figure it all out? And but citizens don't say it much, but we do appreciate your service as an elected official representing us. This is a matter of reminder, which you already know, but everybody knows is we have a representative form of government. So when you're elected by constituents in your districts, you're there to represent them, but you also represent everybody else as well. It's not just them. And basically you're hired, if that's one way to put it, is to make decisions. And those decisions are yes or no, as you know. And in twenty twenty-five, you had to make a lot of decisions with regards to the budget. In fact, you probably made decisions with twenty twenty-five that impacts twenty twenty-seven and other future years. That's just the way it works. And we do appreciate. So my question is, what could, what decisions could you have made in twenty twenty-five that would have helped you? Or you did make, it's rhetorical, and you're not going to answer it, I understand. That would help you make decisions to get that mill levy flat. You almost got there, as I understand it. I haven't reviewed it thoroughly, but then we appreciate you trying to get there. Obviously, getting to revenue neutral is even better for the taxpayers that you represent. But as Rich said a while back, we're in an academic community, and therefore there's a high expectation, a level of service. Unfortunately, not everybody who's in the academic community can afford that high level of service, and that's the reality. So those in the middle class can, those in the middle class can't. It just depends on where you fall. I want to ask one more time, as you continue to tweak this and improve this budget summary, if you could, Rich and others, as you discuss it, consider putting more information on it. I.e. what are your reserves? What are the people's reserves? There's probably some information on here that refers to that, but I'm not sure it's clear. What's the size of the county? What's the square miles of the county? What's the significant things that somebody who would read this would like to know? Please keep that in mind as you continue to improve upon the services and the transparency in Riley County. How'd I do?
Very good.
Well, when I was a typing teacher years ago, we did one-minute timing drills, if you remember those. And I got to the point where I knew what a minute was, even though I didn't look at the clock, which is kind of weird, but it worked.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll put Commissioner. Yay, well, Friday morning, I'm in Delano for the first time in this month. Had some business to take care of several offices. Gave me the first chance to get to see the new indoor projects and the windows being done, CP building. Of course, they're kind of along the back and out of the way there, but just kind of see how it's working and kind of working those things. So it looks very good. It's like we're moving right along the project too. I know a major part of those windows are still kind of faced to the eastern side of the old building there. So it looks like it works good. We're moving along pretty, pretty deliciously. So Friday afternoon, I met with Ray Lawrence from Lake State Foundation, Trenton, Western State of Kansas, discussed the updated plans in the Edge District at Kansas State University. Got to tour the brand new state of the arts at Bill Reed Bandway Event Center up on, up on the hill up there. It's just about done. It's got its first event scheduled in mid-October. The Angeles Beef Association or something has done an event there. They were literally just laying the last layer and they're on top of their things there. The finishments and finals, that's just there. So it looks really, really sharp. Did really, really good planning that out. So I think it's three thousand to three thousand five hundred seats. It's got premium seating. It's got a premium box. It's got a standing room only where you can watch them actually bring in. If you bring in livestock and installs and then get them out on tour. They did a really good job putting that together. It looks really nice. It's of course air-conditioned and heated and everything. So looking for the next steps to maybe that Bible moving forward, but certainly will be right for the university and as well as for the areas. Three years, so once it's completed. Also, on the weekend, did receive my NACO Presidential Appointment Letter. Signed from the second straight leader to serve as Vice Chair of the Veterans and Military Services Committee. And earned a subcommittee and Vice Chair of the NACO Community Economic and Workforce Steering Committee. And on that committee since September twenty twenty, crazy times that that was. And then the Military Service Committee has been on this since September twenty-three. So looking forward to serving that role in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six terms on both those committees. And I think we're getting started on the Veterans Committee here on Friday. I think the committee meeting just to get to talk about some things and some policy ideas for the twenty-five to the six term. Outside of that, I've got some time at home over the weekend, catching up on some reading that I want to catch up on. And a bunch of local biographies in the mystery channel that tell all the useless knowledge that I before what we're waiting and not me. All right, I'll talk to you.
Okay, do, do they have a cost on that event?
No, it used to, but it ended up being part of the package that I got with Hulu, Disney, ESPN. So all the stuff I used to watch, like at the premium price and all combined. Of course, Hulu charged me extra for all that. So some of them, so they got made up the difference.
Actually, I was asking about the event center.
Oh. I think it's actually going to be by them.
Oh, I know. I mean, the total cost of the building and all that. Do they have any kind of cost?
I'd have to come up with things. Interesting. There's some are in, I haven't liked. Maybe there's, I would say some were probably. Well, I don't know.
Well, that would be, because I was thinking about, well, you know, what we may have to do or there might have to be.
Yeah, the interesting thing is up top there, they have an outside arena. It's our setup up there. You know, it could be repurposed and remodeled. I don't think they're going to do it at this point in time because they have everything indoors. But there's all kinds of different ideas of what that can be and what that, you know.
Okay, but.
It certainly. The other, the other thing that's kind of maybe not such a positive is they don't really have the outside stalls and stuff for livestock. So that's going to be problematic to start. So that'll be something that they will work on to try to, you know, when you get to year four, try to work up to that. But, you know, that costs a lot more, extra money too.
Sure.
They did pare down some of the costs. They won't be starting with, even if there, we walk in there, there's concessions, but concessions won't be in place. So they don't have all the locations set up, put in and stuff yet. So try to keep it simple to start with until they get some moving forwards. They got that on some of those costs. According to AI, twenty-three and twenty-six, I mean, that's the overall area that they're doing for agriculture. Yeah. I was trying to find the cost of the sun area, some. Basically, we're saying with some of the other utilities and stuff that had to get drawn in there, that it was closer to thirty, but I don't remember.
It's too bad we couldn't have combined some of that stuff sometimes.
But I don't know.
I didn't want it. I know that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's so, that's still a conversation. Still, there's some of that logistics to the, if they were discussed there, they could have a different outcome.
Okay.
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah, yeah.
There's some revised plans about the whole district of the light and what it's going to take to get it done. That's what's being discussed with the university, theville nation. I think they've got a meeting with Commisses this week to discuss some. Just thinking of the committee. Almost. And it's all private, but they're looking for that.
Getting all the smoothly. We ought to tap into it.
No, it doesn't look that bad.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry to let, I'm just not interested, but.
That's a, now, it's a good question. I think there's a, I think there's a lot of dialogue that could be had, and what comes of that, I can't honestly tell you, but I think there's certainly a dialogue.
Well, let's see. Okay, well, Friday, I met with Vivian and Cindy in my office to do some training on the upcoming civic clerk startup, which is this week. I probably won't remember any of it. But I think it's going to take some time to get used to some of the computer savvy, really, get along. But I, I think, I think that the things that it's going to do, especially for the public to view our meetings, it's going to really go. Anyway, Saturday, I did go by Everybody Counts event down at the Douglas Center, that area. A lot of good vendors visited. Most of them were at least walked by, said hi or whatever. And talked to Dip and us for a little while. Riley County had a really good presence, especially in the community center. So it's plenty of them. They were seeing a lot of people. Then later on, I spent a lot of time clearing out the weeds in my backyard, my backyard. It was ten hours. Because I had to stop it once we allowed them straight back out. Got most of it cleared. We still have some stuff to catch up on. I think everybody's having the same problems. Let's see. Sunday, spent time going over today's agenda and documents, going for a long walk, doing some home physical therapy exercises and just kind of hanging out at home doing stuff. It's about it.
Well. Friday evening, I did Manhattan High Band's Drill Down. It's really, I'd say it's the band's version of Simon Says. They, he calls out the direction to march forward, back left. I don't know. There's certain ways, if he doesn't say it right, they're not supposed to do it. And they start with, you know, a hundred kids out there. And any of the fake directions and speeds and ups and lows from down. And every time, they've had four or five other people out there. Every time I said I missed step, you sit down until they got down to one person at the end. It was, it really, at first, they said, oh, go and go watch that, because my, one of the granddaughters out there. That, you know, what is it? But it was really fun. It was, you know, it was quite entertaining, actually.
I have been doing that for a few years now.
But it's, you know, it was just not a neat thing to go out and see it. Then the, the weekend revolved around one occasion, our fiftieth wedding anniversary. Saturday, we got a special blessing at church, and then Sunday, we had to gather the friends and family at the, at the Alumni Center. Had, you know, saw a lot of people who hadn't seen in a while. Had a great weekend. It was real nice. Went by fast.
Wow.
I'm not fifty yet. I have a fifty as wedding anniversary. I was a baby. We were kids when you got there. And well, we, we, most of us, most of us were sympathy cards, Jay Ryan.
So I'm not.
Oh, goodness.
Sure, get in some real business.
Let's do it. Need a motion to approve a question about one weekend EMS, the RCDMS UBB patient caller from August seventh to August tenth for the Rock the Plains Speech Festival.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, just, you know, explain to me why their EMS doesn't have that.
I, I don't.
Caller, is it real expensive?
Is it? They're, they're about, because we have one that we've on order from two years ago that should be here September. They're about fifty thousand dollars. My guess is just because they don't typically, they borrow ours once a year for the Fourth of July. You know, they have a couple of cross-country events, but they use like a gator, you know, one of the John Deere gator type things to follow the runners there. My guess is it's just because they don't, they don't have enough of a need for them. You know, to, to justify that cost and that the upkeep and such on them, because they're fairly expensive to maintain. So, but, but that would be my, that would be my guess. You know, I was, I was a director for two years over there. And the only thing we had was the, the Fourth of July that we needed something like that for, but that's, that's my guess.
I was just wondering if this is going to be something that's going to come up all the time, and we need to make a charge him for it.
You know, you, you can. I mean, that's not, that's not completely uncommon to, to charge them for something like that. I, I think it'll be interesting to see if this Rock the Plains thing really takes off or not. You know, if it, if it becomes an annual, an annual event, then I think that's something you can absolutely look into. But yeah, I mean, you always have that, that purview.
It's probably not as big a event as Boston.
Probably not. I, you know, I, I'm just, I'm glad it's over in Pot County side and their headache and not mine.
Yeah. Well, that was just a question.
Sure. No, I know. That's fair. I think, I think that's the only time that they've, you know, the only two things that they've asked us for.
So. But that's, they asked us to use that as an interesting.
Well, it's country stampede, Riley County ran it. Remember, we're part of the hospital then, and it was, it was in Riley County's response area. Because remember before we took over, the county took over EMS, we used to respond.
It's not a safe location.
It is, but that's, it's in, it's technically in Potawatomi County. When we were part of the hospital, Riley County was much bigger. Had, it just, it was, comes to our hospital, patients would come to our hospitals, and we wanted to control that. And we have the equipment because of K-State football and all these other events that we had, we had a lot of that equipment already. So, but it was, that was just the dynamic when it was part of the hospital. That was actually, even though it's in Pot County, that was Riley County's response area. Because if you recall, when we're part of the hospital, we responded all the way over to just about Lake Elbow Road in Pot County. Yeah. So that, that's part of that reason why, because that was in our response area.
So calls still be the same, right?
It's correct, correct. Yep. And I, it's, you know, they're thinking they may have several thousand people there. You know, with the height of the stampede, you know, we're having ten, twelve, fifteen thousand people a day. It was, and it was just so much bigger. It was all the camping and everything going on. It was, it was literally twenty-four seven from about that Wednesday through Sunday.
Yeah. That's all, that's all I have.
So absolutely.
Yeah.
Like I say, it's just, you know, I'd say that one day, Fourth of July, is a thing that this is, that a two-day is just.
Yeah, this is a two-day.
Blows up to where it's the big thing and maybe, but once or twice.
I didn't realize the cost that someone, that's, that's.
Well, they, they last. I mean, we've had, one of ours is the one that we're replacing, in which is the one that we give, we loaned them. You know, it's twenty years old.
Maybe they didn't assist it.
I think emergency management has already asked about that, and that I think once, once this occurs, they'll be, they may be asking you about that, using it for their fire scenes and such. Which I, I can see that. That, that, that makes absolutely good sense for, for what they do, so.
I'm going to approve the. Got an EMS to use the Riley County EMS, UTB patient caller from August seventh to August eighth, or excuse me, August tenth, for the Rocket Plains Investment.
I would second that.
They moved it second to approve a request in Potawatomi County to use the UTB patient caller from August seventh, August tenth, for Rocket Plains, all favorites.
Thank you, Professor Paul. Thanks, David. Next, Commissioner, Riley County Employee Agent, Juan Jacob Hansen, for promotion, County Councilor, Councilor of the Street Service Department, Agent Senna Fien, deep up, in the wire, called for firefighter, fire issue number one, Brandon Hammond, paramedic, EMS analyst department separation service. Victoria Gonzalez, your higher paramedic, EMS analyst department, Rebecca Lowenson, clinic intern, health department separation from service. And Ally Bill Rowley, a clinic intern, health department separating from service, all written, signed.
Could I share? I'm glad, I'm glad David left, so that I don't have to inflate his ego any, but I'm really proud of the hiring process with the paramedics. I just wanted to share with you that that current posting was open on four, one of two thousand twenty-five, but we hired six people. Two of them unfortunately did not pass the pre-hire requirements, so we ended up with four people out of that posting. And I, and honestly, that's, that's pretty efficient for that number of people.
Here turns out to be changes minutes. I made a motion to approve of this from the July thirty-first meeting, all favorites.
I would second that.
They moved it second to approve the minutes from the July thirty-first meeting, as presented, all favorites.
And the agenda of the state administration.
Yeah.
The items for next to press conference. It's on these, it's our first debate. We're ready.
Actually, they.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I think about you. That's a good question.
No, I run to your front.
Took me a while to get ready for it. Part of this is usually a lot of smoke. I don't know. I hope it's, I guess so.
That started off a little bit.
Yeah.
We're talking about that Saturday, Sunday. Nineteen seventy-five, what was said, high eighties, and then condition, then air-conditioned church, it was hot.
Many interventions.
I have nineteen days of prescription for it.
That's the half that's. Yeah, I, I like it. That seems the one that I really follow closely. I take nothing following in as K-State. So KU's playing that night, and it's the president was stating to. Why don't we just give it a look, just to.
It could be good. They're becoming adversaries.
Maybe I want to add new stadiums. Publicly funded stadium.
So for the baseball fans, how long do, because the next seasons go on? It seems like it's endless.
In September, and the World Series this way, which was, you know, the World Series is all the way to the first week in November.
Wow, I was just thinking this morning, they kept talking about the radio games. I always thought it was over the three years.
NBA is one of the best.
I think it's not the same. It goes dark like that. Weekend of Halloween goes all the way to June.
I keep on attracting them hard to just like try to understand what was there. And I feel like I really do something. What's your best?
The main rule is not to meet your dear people over here. It's, my son talks out of the, when, and my name's Pika. When watching them in person, playing different TV, can't quite see what's going on. And of course, I've seen one, two. Yeah, so I've seen it, and I know, but I, two daughters, like.
About two sides of the entire, it's like, you don't have to.
Sunday evening, it's final, and then whatever they, they lost to the game.
It's more than that.
The amount of money. You just have to be a freak out when you guys want to be that. So then.
I'm getting on the radio and I took, I took the dog after walking, it's fine, well, I didn't see the flies. And then by the time I got to deal with the walk, sprinkling.
Well, I thought it was thunder, and I thought maybe it's for Riley.
Yeah.
The radar, I thought, nah, I think that was thunder.
I know the puppy got me up at like four fifty, and so I had to go take him out, and then I seen there was some lightning out in the distance from that. So I know that it was somewhere around then. Yeah. Way too early.
It starts getting a little light, so the sun was just kind of coming through pretty.
Four thirty-five, watched the news, saw that some had noticed that the back of Mr. Drive. Didn't, you shouldn't get west. I saw that, and I heard the plastic with the back of Mr. Drive, and board line, hold the dank. I ended up bringing him to work.
Right, then, you know, it just had sprinkled.
Didn't see much. Yeah.
But, you know, those challenges are so strange.
All right. Good morning Commissioners, Jacob Hansen, Riley County Councilor, this morning here, just to present you the. The pending county projects that my office is, of course, taking on, there hasn't been a whole lot that has changed since last time, as. As far as any major tests, most of that's just kind of ongoing, um. One thing that will be hitting us, uh, here momentarily will be a request from the city. Uh, for an annexation of property out by the airport, I'm sure you guys might have seen that on their agenda, but. Uh, that'll be coming to us, and so I'll have to do some, some basic evaluation there, we, we did one not too long ago. Actually, uh, basically for the same purpose, so should be relatively straightforward.
Is that the one that's gonna maybe be the, it's gonna be the Amazon?
Yeah, I'm not certain.
That's already a city property.
Okay.
Out of the annex, when the business part was done. What over here, that was, two thousand nine, seven, ninety-eight, yeah, it was right around ninety-eight.
Well, once Rich receives the certified copy, that will move forward and get that on your guys' agenda. Uh, one thing also I wanted to just bring up briefly is that, of course, we'll be working on, um, putting together a car for the, uh. County councillor position, and we'll be giving you some details on that, maybe some, uh, I should say assistant county councillor, not county councillor. Assistant.
It wasn't written down.
Miss misspoke there, okay, let's, let's try that again. How about, uh, we're, we're gonna bring, of course, for the deputy county councillor position, ideally Thursday, we'll be able to have that presented, and we'll get that ball rolling. Uh, pretty quick, I have a couple ideas of maybe how we can make sure we can get some good applicants. Um, and kind of make sure our pool is something that we can pull from, uh. Considering, you know, previous, uh, positions, our pre- previous requests for this position, um. One other point that I would like to bring up, of course, is, uh, I think you all seen my email this weekend, sent out to department heads, asking. Uh, if they had any input on, uh, legislative topics, I'd be happy to hear them. Um, this is something I also suggested, maybe we could see at a county officials luncheon. Um, you know, uh, it may be doubling up on efforts, but I defer, of course. To you guys on whether or not that is something you would want to see on the county officials luncheon. Um, I haven't received any responses, but to be fair to all department heads, I was sent over the weekend, so they did not have a duty to respond, um. So, just pending on that, don't need an answer right now, but, um, we'll want to start kind of putting things together for the luncheon, if we decide we want to have it.
Good without this one, I, I think you can send a email out, and I think that's how we've done that, pass this, and that out to department heads. Questions, legislation, items, as needed.
Yeah.
Drawdown of that, and don't think we will send five or six of them, but a solid. Four would be probably our threshold, I would think.
Okay.
And then discuss that, you know, what gets brought up.
And I think that we need to set up a specific timeframe, you know, that they get like five minutes or whatever. So that everybody gets a chance to, it just depends on students.
And that's, so Catherine, if I, if I understand correctly, you're wanting to go ahead and have the county officials luncheon, and do the, and do the legislative topics?
Well, if we get good response from you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, if there's several, if there aren't any, then we, but like says. Like, you know, not if they wanted to come, I know the pressure will have, there's, they've been. Battling for twenty-two years.
Yeah.
Oh, really, yeah, I mean, they're talking, you know, they.
Like I say, it's just, you know, it is, yeah, if, you don't hear any response.
Okay, all right, well, I'll report back on Thursday, um, hopefully we'll, we'll have a decision by then. Um, as far as any specific tasks, any specific projects, you would, uh, like an update on, or curious where things stand? Aside from everything within here, it's, uh, I can say at least for us, it's pretty much business as usual, um. One other point that, uh, just came to mind was, of course, I think I have already told you all this, um, in person, at least at some point, but. Prairie Wood has, uh, filed a petition for review to the Supreme Court. So that'll give me thirty days to write a, uh, response to that petition, and I'm also considering doing what's known as a conditional cross petition. Which that essentially means is if, if the Supreme Court decides to take up this case. Then it'll consider an additional issue, because if you remember, the county did lose on one issue, but one on, well, the more important issue. I still think, of course, that our position is pretty sound, so my intention is to do a cross petition and have that presented at the Supreme Court. And of course, that, and, and the way, and, and Commissioners, you can tell me whether or not you, you prefer this way or not, the conditional, uh, simply just means if. The Supreme Court grants review, then it will consider that fact, but if it does not grant, grant review, it won't consider. That issue raised as one that will determine whether or not they're reviewed. I can also just do a regular cross petition, which would mean that they, they give, the Supreme Court gives the same weight to that particular issue that I'm asking to be. Reviewed. Um, so I, I guess we get, there's a higher chance that, um, the Supreme Court would take our case, if I do just a regular cross petition. Um, the reason, just to give you a, a little bit of reasoning why I think the conditional is more appropriate. Um, is mainly had to deal with the way our LDRs or land development regulations were drafted, those have already been changed. Um, so I don't believe really we gained anything by doing a mandatory cross petition, um. On that particular issue. But as the clients, of course, you guys have the right to direct me what you would like.
Whatever you think's best.
All right.
You understand that that was ideal, obviously.
There are some of the different layers to that.
Yeah, the Supreme Court, uh, could get, can get pretty interesting, um, I think the main thing, just so you guys are aware, of course, is that there's discretionary view, and then there's. Mandatory review, uh, in this case, it does not rise to a mandatory review requirement, usually that, I say usually. The rules require that it's either a question brown on the Kansas Constitution. Or the US Constitution as a matter of first impression, which neither of those are the case here. So, it's completely discretionary by the Supreme Court, whether or not they want to take it up.
Got a long list there.
Sure do, we stay busy.
It was on, but it is, we will check some of it.
I didn't see that, see you, that, that funny.
Yeah. There were quite a few.
There must be something, uh, that, that times minus nine months ago, that actually, time, must be very insured. Yeah, make the lines for your birthday.
So when is the birthday? August thirty. Oh, okay. Last year I went to Colorado, we were, that was. Yeah, well, that's like, that's, that's Labor Day. Yeah, and Chad and I, it was a huge, major day celebration, so. Oh, really? And in time, so we're sharing.
Like the whole town.
I mean, basically.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jesse Hubbard, Administrative Assistant for Riley County Community Corrections. I have two things for you today. The first, if you remember, we came in on June twenty third to the BOCC meeting and requested and received permission from you to reallocate personnel funds to purchase a vehicle, office, and miscellaneous equipment. KDOC requires that the JCAP and the BOCC sign off on any adjustments that total more than five thousand or one percent of our current year grant award. So we are here for you. Excuse me, we're here today with our Adult Services and Juvenile Services Fourth Quarter Budget Adjustment Reports for your signatures. The amounts for the Adult Services one, we estimated we were gonna move about forty thousand and ended up being forty thousand, seven hundred. And for the Juvenile Services, it's kind of tiny, so I made a second one. I don't know if that's much better. We anticipated moving thirty thousand and it was thirty thousand, nine hundred, thirty one thousand, nine hundred and seven. So fairly close to our estimates.
So the thing is that you're gonna be purchasing will be your kind of newly remodeled space.
Yes, yes, we have some, yes, much needed new desks. We did get a very much needed new security system in our place in our office as well. We did get some furniture, some desks, new vehicle, which is. Yes.
What are they projecting?
When, I'm sorry?
What are they, when are you gonna be moving back for you?
I don't know, but the windows are in already on the third floor and they look great, so they're not all the way done. But I, I think, I believe all the windows in our office are done. They just need to do the finishing on the inside, maybe.
Probably do a repeat.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks great, though. Very nice.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be able to see out the windows. We're just excited. Yeah.
We need to make separate motions on this. Yeah, I'm all in. Yeah, I don't think I'm supposed to be. Okay. Did we submit to the KDOC in the amounts of forty thousand, seven hundred for adult services, thirty one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars for juvenile services?
I would second that.
And moved in second with the line item adjustments to be submitted to KDOC. The amounts of forty thousand, seven hundred for adult services and thirty one thousand, nine hundred and seven for juvenile services. All fair.
Jerry Blue's son.
The next step for you guys, I have not requested this before, so please tell me if I'm. You need to give you some more information, but we have two vehicles we're no longer using and we would like to request permission to put them on auction. The vehicles would be sold online by Purple Wave, who's contracted to conduct sales within the state of Kansas, so there would be no cost to us. Cost would be incurred by the buyer who would pay a ten percent premium to Purple Wave. We have two Chevy Impalas, one that's got higher mileage than another, so we'd like to sell that one with a higher mileage and sell our Ford Transit van that we purchased to make transports for juvenile services programs that no longer exist. So it sits out at the police department and doesn't get used. So we're gonna, we'd like to sell that Transit van and put the car that we have with a lower mileage there for juvenile intake purposes.
Very good. Okay. Well, I would make the motion to authorize staff to move forward and authorize community corrections to contract with Purple Wave Manhattan to conduct an internal auction to sell two surplus deals. So.
And moved in second, we authorized staff to move forward and authorize community corrections. Contract with Purple Wave Manhattan to conduct an internet owned auction to sell surplus vehicles. Small affair.
Aye.
And Commissioners, I apologize, I forgot to mention that the packet had a date of just July twenty twenty five, but the signature page has the date of. Twenty twenty five. Yeah. Date provided, so it's a separate than what's in the packet, if you're okay with that. If not, I can come back and re-present. Thank you.
Yeah.
Still, I want to hear.
Sure. I don't need to know.
You usually hear it every time. No. Well.
We can afford to be the ten thousand dollars on this series or. No, but I've put fifty dollars into the surplus. So she gets something out of this.
Yeah, you did. Did you ever hear?
I did.
So I'm ready for a steer.
There'd be good eating.
Yeah. Then you can put processing in.
Clap and goes on to the state fair. Yeah.
Doesn't.
We got ten minutes, gotta get more than that at the state fair thing. Yeah. They did. They just. Rank. Is that what it is? Yeah.
Well, what is it, the new person that takes the steer to the state fair is the. Person. Fair was shown as. Sure.
Yeah.
When the last. Ten thousand dollars to.
Not everyone's. Usually they made their matches advertising. To me.
Stay cute. And go to the.
He would be. Uh, he would be his expert. May have a rhythm. But then. Okay.
Are you ready, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Mark French, Major of Riley County Police Department for my monthly update on your Riley County. July, we ended the month with an ADP of a hundred and twenty one point one, which, believe it or not, was down from the previous month, which is a good sign. Currently today, our ADP is sitting at one fourteen, which is, you know, we've. When we predicted the ACH contract, we were thinking we would keep it below one ten. So we're at least trending that way. However, we're still in custody inmate wise, but fifteen females. So as you guys have all toured the jail, you know, anytime we're sixteen, we're pretty much maxed to that capacity. So. But overall, everything in the jail's been going very well. You guys approved CIP money back in December and due to some technical difficulties with the software upgrade and everything, I'm happy to report that's all scheduled to occur this Wednesday. So that project will be completed for new additional cameras will be added to the jail. A lot better quality than than what some of the current stuff we have is. So we're still on track to continue with the CIP program, smaller in nature, that just changes out four to five cameras a year, so we can get the jail caught up in that regards. It's been challenging, but I'm mildly confident that we'll present to the law board on the eighteen, then get approval for the body scanner in the jail, which will be a great upgrade for security and safety of the facility. We have a new transport van that went online in the last month and we've outfitted it with cameras, something that I considered a liability when I took over down there is you didn't have any ability to transport with any kind of video, so we're working on that right now as well. And I think that's about it. Been pretty uneventful and we're staying very, very busy.
Huh? Knock on wood.
Yes. Yep. So you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll continue to trend. We have, we removed, I think, eight inmates to prison in the last month, which is. So a lot of those were longer term prisoners and anytime we can move those numbers. They are starting to move through the system. A lot of those bigger cases are starting to come to.
Yeah. So a lot of press.
We do have still multiple cases with multiple defendants, which is why you'll see we're still housing, I think, three males at different jurisdictions. So. Lieutenant Bortnick.
Morning, my name's Dan Bortnick. I'm a lieutenant with the Riley County Police Department and filling in for Major Hayek today, who's unavailable for the patrol update. Don't have too many things to, to kind of announce today. We are tracking this weekend. The big events are going to be Hola Baloo up in Leonardville. And we also have the Rock the Plains event that's happening out of Tuttle Creek. You know, Rock the Plains, I think, is trying to take the place of Country Stampede. However, it's been a much smaller footprint than Stampede was. It's a few days less. They've not requested campground support as Stampede did. So really on Rock the Plains, we are, we've signed a contract and we're providing some traffic and parking support off of Tuttle Creek Boulevard into the, into the state park is kind of our, kind of our role with Rock the Plains. Hola Baloo is gonna be like Hola Baloo every year up in Leonardville. We're gonna have, you know, North County officers out there, you know, having a presence, being out and interacting with the crowd and, and as all Hola Blues, we're expecting a good time. I don't think it's gonna be nearly as hot as it has been the last couple of weeks and the last couple of years. So expecting good turnout and, and a good time by everyone. Not really tracking anything else on the patrol side of things. Major French said, you know, it's been busy, but been managing the heat. It's been nice to get out of the heat. We've had a lot of heat related, you know, medical transports and, and different things like that that we've been out and about with and checking on people with stall cars and things of that nature. But finally getting through it and hopefully this is the, the cool break we need here until we get through the, the season. Any questions for me? Yeah, thank you very much.
Morning, Evan McMillan, Public Works. Just wanted to give notice that we will be closing the transfer station on Saturday, August sixteenth. We're gonna do some maintenance on the scale pits, get those cleaned out, try to prolong future maintenance on the scales and also clean out the building. So we'll be closed that full day on Saturday.
You got the. The bid for the re-bid.
Yes, so that's been relit. Think it opens August twenty first, twenty second. I'd have to check for sure, but late August.
It seems.
Yeah, yeah, we did reopen for bids, so. Hopefully it's better numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure you get ready for some.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. So this is one of the, kind of the final steps for you guys to. kind of the final steps for you guys to approve before we have our budget hearing, um, and you'll approve when we publish as well, but the budget is ready to submit to the auditors for final review. Um, so at this point, all I'm asking is for approval to send it to them. Have any questions?
She's gonna turn around on that audit.
Um, our audit is actually pretty well done at this point, so last week you guys had approved the letter to be sent to Jacob for any, you know, pending litigation or anything like that, so he's working on that and getting that sent over to Jacob, our auditor, um, and then we'll be wrapped up. Yeah, it's trying to make sure. Yeah, trying to make sure I don't send the email to the wrong person.
Sorry.
No.
Fire too. Yeah.
And Jacob Clark and Health Department, lots of Jacobs, so.
Jacobs, yeah.
Yeah, so actually all of our numbers are prepped and done. Um, I sent, uh, some edits to him last week and he got those all fixed and, um, but it's, it's ready, so. Which is nice compared to where we were last year. That's good.
Well, I'll say I would make a motion to approve sending the twenty twenty-six budget to James Gordon and Associates. So.
Been moved in, we're moved in second to approve sending the twenty twenty-six budget to James Gordon and Associates. Review, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm thirty.
Good, good.
I don't know what they know. No. I don't. But. There's probably the same guy that is. Yesterday, I was. We've got two more.
Next meeting.
So we can see morning, that took you in the short meetings. Line that.
Next meeting will be switch, 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 switch over to the new.
Yeah.
Software.
Working on this morning and then.
We haven't posted anything yet. It's, it's working, it's just not on there yet.
So how does that, when she posts, sends the agenda out and then posts on there or do we have to wait till the morning of or how does that work?
As soon as it's ready and published for the public, it will appear on that site.
So today's day because we're still on the old system. We're.
Especially. Yeah. She had a test one, we were asking people to. Like practice. But that is not available for the public. It was my Oscar speech, is what I'm.
I wonder who's.
And. You can do this.
And toes. Hopefully I'll remember everything you're talking on Friday show.
I'll tell you again, no, don't worry about it.
Hey, no, we just. Across that bridge when we get to. Uh, with that said, no, I had to make a motion to adjourn the August fourth meeting of the county commission.
And second.
Been moved in second to adjourn the August fourth meeting of the Riley County Commission, all in favor?